The town. Town manager is admitting anyone?
Yes, there we go.
So before we begin the meeting, I would like to ask the town manager to announce the protocols.
Yes, as you just heard, reminder that this meeting is being recorded. So we will post this on the town website and the town YouTube channel. Also set this meeting up so that there is closed captioning available. For folks that want to follow along that way, we'll do our best to try to speak into the microphones on our end. So you can hear alongside here rather the conversation that we're all having here. Ask that folks who do wish to make a comment, either use the raise hand function. Or the chat function is also set up so that you can directly message me. And either indicate that you would like to speak or also feel free to indicate what you would like to speak. And I can make that comment on your behalf. Also ask that folks that are not actively engaged in dialogue. Turn off your video until you are making comment. It just makes the recording cleaner and easier for the folks that are joining us here to to follow along on the screen. And finally, if we get interrupted during this meeting in some way that doesn't allow us to to carry on. We'll we'll cut the cut the meeting and I'll send out new. Login information townwide so that folks can rejoin and we can carry on with our business. And. Aside from that, I will turn it back over to you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, and we will begin with our public comment period. If there is anyone in Zimley and wishes. To make a comment or ask a question. And the town manager will see if anybody. He'll be back in a second. We're doing a technical adjustment.
Oh, I see it here raised.
Yeah, Lucy Freeman.
Good evening, Lucy.
Hey, hi there, Lucy Freeman on Fallstone, and I have two issues. The first is, you know, with the Marty Shaw path close, it was going to be one week. Then it was two weeks, now it's going to be five or six weeks. You know, that's the path that everyone takes to walk up to Friendship Heights in the metro. I'm afraid after this is going to be six weeks, eight weeks. I mean, do you know what's going on? I mean, why did they miscalculate so bad?
Matt answer that, you know, you know that unfortunately, we have no control over that property, but I'll let the town manager answer.
So this was work that was done by Friendship Heights to redo that park. That's basically on the other end of.
Yeah.
And I know that one of the delays was because we got that really cold weather. So they weren't able to pour any concrete. I think the concrete needs to be poured so that there's a 24 hour period when it's above 40 degrees or something like that. So why they chose to do it in January, I I don't really know that they're kind of playing with fire there. But I know that that was part of the delay. I also know that unfortunately, some people have been hopping over the fence there, which has caused them to have to double back and do the work a little bit. A little bit more and extending the length of the work. I think also they just did a. They were more optimistic than they ought to have been to begin with with the the timing of it. So unfortunately. Part of the reason it got extended so long is because I I had to have a call with them to say, you know what? We should, we should be telling our residents what to expect for the length of the project instead of just doing it week by week. And announcing at the end of the week, it might be extended for another week. So that's where that's that's why three or four weeks, but hopefully by the end of that, that'll take care of it all.
Well, could you, could you express to them that for many of this, this is a big inconvenience? And that we hope that, I mean, for Pete's sake, this week it's going to be 60 degrees Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. They can lay there, I agree with you. I can't believe anyone would plan to lay concrete in January, but now incredibly, they could lay it in February.
Well, they don't.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
There. They don't. They don't run as efficient a government as we do. And but but I, but thank you for bringing this up, Lucy. And I think what we can do is, yes, we can definitely express our dismay to them. And and Matt can also give maybe. Twice weekly updates and get get from now.
Right.
I mean, that's the best we can do.
My second issue is this appears later in the agenda. And it's about plastic, I think, plastic bottles at town functions and pool functions. So I wanted to bring this up because last July, you know, our July picnic, etc., with all the officials. You know, that tends to be when it's really hot. And this past July. Congress delegates and. And council members, they asked me for bottles of water and we had so few bottles of water. There was, you know, there was nothing for them, they were all gone and we couldn't give them. They go to Kenwood, they get a meal. So I would like to, for the council to think about this, that. First of all, what I would prefer is that we have lots of bottles of water that we can give as a thank you to the firemen, to the delegates, to the state senator, to, you know, all the other officials, the Congress, the council members. But if not that, think, how are you going to handle this so that we can give water to our officials when they come? You know, get those great big jugs of. Of water like they have in offices and then then we have all these paper cups everywhere. But to think about that issue is I hate for our town to be, you know, sort of mean to our officials. And also those firemen come over here with their fire engines and they're all thirsty, they're here all day, they can't bring with them 12 packs of water. Okay, that's all I have to say.
I'll let the staff respond to what are the plans so that if this. Law gets this law gets passed, this resolution, what will the contingency plan be to be a good host to our guests?
Thank you.
Yeah, we have a couple of options. We haven't fully fleshed it out yet since it hasn't officially been adopted yet. But number one is, I think that the idea behind it is to encourage people to use their own water bottles and bring water in more sustainable. Carrying. Options. But also there are water cartons that we can purchase that are less harmful for the environment than plastic water bottles, which the the purpose and intent of it was to reduce our use of plastic in town in general. So those are, those are a couple. We also have a water. What do we call them? A bubbler or a water fountain in the office here too, that that might be an option as well.
Well, I don't think you want all these people going, having to go, come up to somebody like me, say, how do I get a drink of water? And I say, well, you go into the office and you'll find a bubbler. Let's do better than that.
Well, yeah, well, thank you for bringing it up and we'll figure it out. And and perhaps the council will put money in so that we have more food for our guests. But why don't you come testify during the budget hearings about that, Lucy?
Okay, last time we had a few salty things. Yes.
Okay, well, thank.
Okay, thank you.
So much, thank you so much.
Anybody else? No.
Okay, thank you, everyone. The next item is the approval of the agenda, is there a motion?
I have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll just make a quick. A quick note that Councilmember Bar. Actually pointed out to me that I I had mixed up the names of the nominees for the two committees. So if you just swap them.
There were people going off.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, the the people that they're replacing are.
Well, that's for the consent agenda, that's not for the approval.
No, I'm sorry, yeah.
So.
I don't know if that 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 matters.
Not for the approval, is there further discussion on the approval of the agenda? Hearing now, all this in favor? Yeah, thank you. The next item is approval of the consent agenda, and I think the Councilor Bar has a. Correction.
Yeah, actually, it's been corrected on the website now. So Bernie Kerstnik is a member of the Equity Inclusion Committee who is stepping down. And Donald Harmon is a member of the Environment Committee who is stepping down. And so the replacements for them are correct as listed in either the older agenda or the newer agenda. And that's.
Okay, thank you, is there, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Thank you, is there discussion hearing now, all this in favor? All this opposed, okay, so we are, okay, so we're writing ahead, we're. Okay, the next item is publicly motion to consider a request to remove the condition of the tree removal permit for the removal of two trees to the property located 4906 Fallstone Avenue to no longer require replanting of a canopy tree as requested by the applicant Deborah Schollman. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, and the applicant is here joining us. So thank you for taking time out of your evening to join us. Just a quick refresher for the council. So this, the property 4906 Fallstone, they removed a couple of hazardous trees. This was in December and the council at that time made a condition of the of the removal that the applicant plants a canopy tree to replace the two trees that were removed. However, that. That was conditional on the applicants accepting those that term and that gave an option for the applicant to come back to the council if they consulted with the town arborist and could. Show that there was sufficient canopy coverage on the property. And I know we have also Dr. Feather is here as well, so.
Does that, whether they want to add anything to that? Or if we want to hear from the applicants first? Well, but let's see, as part of the report, remember now we're doing the report from staff. So Dr. Feather, did you want to add anything to? The. Matt's report.
I I went by the site and she, there's a large. Red maple that's in the backyard. I took pictures that are in the packet. And then they have quite a few. Hollies as screening in the back. So those are the, just to give you an idea, those are existing trees on the property.
And and do you have a recommendation on the request?
I mean, there's space for a tree, but I mean, it's. There's a space for the tree in the front, but I I mean, that's kind of up to the council and the. And the and the owner.
Okay, thank you. So.
Can I ask Dr. Feather a question?
So now the applicant will have an opportunity to comment on the staff reports. Welcome.
Hi, so.
Please show them.
Hi, Harry's also here, Harry Holzer. My husband, so you know, the issue really, the issue is just watering the trees. And I know that sounds lame, but we don't water, we don't water our grass, we don't. Water, I've tried to plant trees and they've died, maybe not the first year, but after that. So that's just my concern, that's my only concern is if we're traveling or. I don't know, I don't mind paying for water, I kind of, I don't water, I don't water my grass. So that's the only concern, you have a concern?
Okay, thank you, council.
It's a conservation issue for me.
Okay, thank you, Council President Serkhar, do you have any questions?
Yes, for, so thank you for joining us. One of the photos makes it look like you have sort of some conservation landscaping, is that? You know, and you're minimizing the use of grass, is that correct?
I can't understand what you said, could you repeat it?
I'm just curious if you are using conservation landscaping. I don't know if it's maybe not formally, but the way you're talking about not using, not watering your grass and.
I don't know, I grow, I grow weeds, I don't, I don't know what conservation landscaping is. But I will say that I'm very disappointed in the job that the tree company did because they. They tore up a lot of the grass and and they made two big mounds instead of one, which destroyed a lot more of the grass. And really, I just have weeds and grass and I don't know what conservation landscaping is. I think a lot of people in Somerset don't water their grass. I mean, I I'm at the bottom of a long hill, so I haven't been able to grow grass in my backyard because of all the runoff. Because a river runs through my backyard. So it's all sort of in delicate balance, it's a little easier on the front.
So with with that in mind, Dr. Feather, Featherstone. Are there some trees that would be, I don't know, appropriate, more likely to be successful? In such a location without being watered by the owners, some on a runoff in the downside of the hill, etc.?
Well, I mean, you need to, new trees you need to water for at least the first year. So if it's dry the next year, you need to water, after that, they kind of take care of themselves, so.
What's involved in watering, Dr. Feather?
Well, i- i- if you get, if you get like a, you know, the bag, have you seen the bags? The the green watering bags? Gator bags, that makes it a lot easier, you just put the bag on and you can fill the bag up every 10 days in the summer. If it rains, you don't need to fill the bag. And that then that makes.
How heavy is the bag?
The the bags have 20 gallons of water. So you just stick the hose in the top and fill up the bag. You know, if it, if it's really dry, you need to do it weekly. But if it's, you know, like last year, 10, 10 to 14 days was.
That sounds great, then if I'm out of town, I don't have to worry that I'm going to kill a town tree and. That sounds great and you'll, you know, maybe somebody could explain to us what to do with the. With the bags.
Yeah, I can, I can show you when it's, when it's time.
You you all would plant the tree, right? We wouldn't, you'd plant the tree and we just water it, is that the idea?
No.
We have to plant the tree?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I thought the town, I don't, we have to pay for the tree?
Well, it's on your property, so.
Okay, so we're not interested, we're spending, I think, $5,000 just to take down the two dangerous trees. I don't think we're interested in spending money on on trees when we're gagging at the price of taking down the two dangerous trees.
And the time, the time as well is leading, but it's just not what we would choose to do.
Council President Serkhar, do you have any further questions?
No further questions.
Thank you, Councilor Bar, do you have any questions?
Yeah, the only question is a comment. Which is that Montgomery County. Has a program plant trees, shade trees for free, no cost. In other words. They will also assist with long term care, they say, all for free. They say that when installed, the trees will be more than 10 feet tall and they'll eventually grow to more than 50 feet. And they provide decades of shade. So you do not need to spend money. You can use the Tree Montgomery program and they will assist with the care of the tree, in fact.
Can someone send us that information?
I'm sure we can, yes.
Yeah, if I can, and actually, we're, I I'm in the process of using that program. I've spoken to people at Tree Montgomery, it's a county run program, they're very friendly, professional, they're bath logged. So I put in my request for a tree like last March after I had a tree fall down. And they finally reached out to me in November, so, but it's completely free. There's a range of trees to choose from for my lot, they came out and they looked and they recommended river birches, which will only grow to be about 30 feet tall, they're a little bit smaller, but they're still considered canopy trees. So I'm, I'll work with the town manager to send you the information.
Okay, but in the meantime, in the meantime, will you leave it to our discretion whether we choose to do this after reading the information? Or will you mandate?
Well, that's why that's the subject of the hearing, so.
I don't think we have a choice.
Councilor Bar, do you have any?
I could not, no further questions, I just applied.
May I answer her, Hall or do you have any questions?
Okay, I just want to make something clear that these are their trees, this is not, these are not town trees. These are, they would be the property of of Deborah and Harry's house. And I thought that when we said, you know, we proved to take down the trees, that they were going to have to plant trees. So I just want to, I just want to make this clear, do they have to?
So why don't you answer the question because the town attorney.
Town attorney. Do they have to plant trees or don't they have to plant trees, because I don't think anybody's clear on that.
The council has the option to impose replanting as a condition of approval. And the code provides that. If replanting is imposed, the additional following conditions shall apply. Your performance bond is submitted, the planting's done at a time and location, approved in advance by the town arborist, and there's a a two year warranty period for replanting trees. If a tree dies within that. Two year warranty period, a replacement tree has to be installed and another two year warranty period is provided. Now, that's if you impose replanting as a condition of permit approval. You you can also, under the code, consider. Additional conditions deemed necessary to protect the public health, safety and welfare. So you know, if you were leaning to something else like. The applicant shall apply for the, you know, the county program, that could be an alternative condition under that section of the code.
I I just want to.
Hold on, hold on, you'll, you'll have a chance, you'll have an opportunity to find any of this after the councils ask questions. So save your, save your yourself, Councilor Hall, do you have any other questions?
I do, I want to.
Applicants or?
I I just, can I ask Dr. Feather a question?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Feather, I just wonder, what's your opinion? Does this property need another tree? Does, you know, how would you advise us as a council to weigh in on this? Do you think it's important for there to be another tree or not? Considering they have all these trees in their backyard, do they need to have another tree in their front yard? So what's, I I what I'm looking for is your opinion.
Well, I mean, the the two, two large trees were taken down and there's space for, you know. There's space for a new tree.
I know, but you, you recommend us, us to say you have to plant a new tree or not? I I'm just looking for some guidance.
Yeah, I, I mean. Everybody loves trees. So, I mean, I, I, you know. And there's space for a tree there. But it's not, you know, it's on private property, so that makes it something else, it's not public, but. I mean, there, there's a nice space for a tree there, a a large tree, a canopy tree.
Thank you, I'm done.
Okay, the council member, or in fact, you have any questions?
Um, my question, I guess, to maybe the town attorney, I'm not sure to whom. So, you know, I understand that when someone comes in and is looking to tear down a house and, you know, it has to remove trees to tear down the house, we ask them for a plan to replant them. Have we asked residents who have removed trees for safety issues? That have we actually required them to replant trees?
I think.
So Matt, I believe. Gave us some data on past applications at the last hearing, is that right, Matt?
Yeah.
Well, it's the general statement that. If, you know, if a tree is removed to. Allow construction to take place, typically the council has imposed replanting as a requirement. On the other hand, not as commonly when a tree is removed because of a hazard. Under the town code, there are factors that the council reviews. Aggravating factors against removal and mitigating factors weighing in favor of removal. No one factor. Carries more weight than another. So you know, the council can can make a decision on a case by case basis. And. You know, here, although the trees were deemed dangerous at the last hearing, and the council can make different hearing, different findings tonight. At the last hearing, the council found that even though the trees were dangerous, it would be appropriate to compel replanting if. There were not sufficient canopy trees on the lot already.
And just, if if I can just add quickly, so just as a reminder, the town code was recently amended. So previously, the only time that the council saw tree removal applications was during construction. Or if three or more trees were being removed at once. But now that we've changed it so that it's not three or more trees, it is the total diameter of all of the trees. That's what precipitated this going before the council. And what, and so this is kind of the first time that we've encountered this since the code has been amended. The the and and one of the things that Ron had alluded to is typically, we don't get that many applications for tree removal unless it's part of construction or they're hazardous.
Right.
So we we get very few applications where somebody wants to take down just a healthy tree or.
Right, but I don't think in this situation, they're not trying, they don't want to just take down the trees, they have to take them down because of safety.
Yes, yes, and and Dr. Feather, yeah, yes, and I did, I included the original application and Dr. Feather agreed that the trees were hazardous, and so that's why he agreed with and recommended removal of the trees.
Okay, so, right, so Councilor Reback, do you have any further questions?
I don't have any other question.
Okay, so before I give the applicants the opportunity to provide or ask any more questions, I'm going to go through the council. So Council President Serkhar, do you have any further questions?
Thank you, one one follow up question that I was reminded of by this discussion. Can you tell me how many canopy trees you have on your lot? Following the removal of those two hazardous trees?
Oh, you know, first of all, I I don't know what defines a canopy tree, Dr. Feather talked about the hollies. There's an enormous tree right next to the house that I think. At some point may become dangerous, I'm sort of amazed to hear that more trees have not been taken down. We have taken down three trees in the last six years just because they're so big and dangerous and dying. I don't, I don't know what, I can't, I can't tell you a canopy tree from a. Pern.
Yeah, we have, we have a number, we have, as was described, one very large tree that that. Provides shade to the house and then several that are just a little bit smaller. So I think, I think we've already established that there are sufficient numbers of canopy trees on the lot. It's surprising us frankly, because we did the town a favor. I mean, not only was this, these two trees a risk to our house and our property, but to the rest of the town. To the wires coming down, to cars.
Children playing in the street, we were told, we were told, you know, a child could be killed by this branch that was hanging over because kids are always playing and I I'm a little incensed that Dr. Tobert has said many times, there's enough canopy trees on the lot.
And we. And, and we bore the, when we bore the full price in money and time and in hassle and finding people to do this, we did this out of, out of some sense of social responsibility as well as personal. And we've already established that there's enough canopy trees. So I, I'm just not sure what the basis is for mandating us to go any further. Just seems to me that we, we've already established all of that.
So I didn't realize we'd established there are enough canopy trees on the lot. I, I read through Dr. Feather's original report and I just couldn't find it. It could be there.
Tobert said.
Apologize if I missed it.
Okay. He said it twice, but he won't, he won't say, yes, we need more. He said trees are nice.
There, there's, there's one canopy tree in the rear. So, I mean.
There's one?
Yeah, the, the big, the big maple in the rear. Is it, that's a canopy tree.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, councillor Bar, do you have any further questions?
Uh, no further questions.
Thank you, councillor Heller.
No.
Councillor Reback.
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Now, Mr. Holzer and Ms. Sherman, thank you for being here tonight. I assume that Mr. Holzer is also an applicant. Right?
What is he saying? Wait, can you repeat that?
Were you both the applicant? I'm just wondering.
Are we both?
Don't you both own the house?
Yes.
Yeah.
You're both the, you're both the applicant here.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that because we're, we're trying to get our, uh, records straight. In any case, now is your, before the council goes into the next phase of the hearing where they debate your request, now is your opportunity to write any further information, to rebut anything with standard, to ask any more questions. So answer it, Tom.
I, I guess it remains the question, uh, does Doctor Feather think that the one canopy tree plus a lot of the smaller ones is sufficient for our property? I mean, that, I, that we should get to be able to get a clear answer on that.
Right. Look, there's one large tree in the back and there's room for trees in the front. Whether you want to put them there or not is, I mean, that's what's being debated.
Okay. Well, it sounds like it's optional. It sounds like, like you're, you were not saying we need to do that. I, I'm hearing you saying it's, it's, it's an option, but not something that needs to be mandated, that it's, that what we have is sufficient. Is that, is that?
I mean, that's up to the council, not me.
Okay. Okay. That's, that's how I'm hearing.
But I, I also, I'm also really, really surprised. I, I, I find it really hard to believe that more trees haven't been taken down just because they've been dangerous. I mean, we've done three in twenty-two years and three of them were in the last six years or five years. And it, it feels arbitrary to me as one of the council members pointed out, although she didn't use that. I mean, if there is sufficient canopy coverage, then we don't need to replace it. And I mean, frankly, it feels really bad. We're like really good town members and I feel like this is arbitrary. So.
Okay. Well, thank you for being here tonight and making the request and providing so much information. Now it is up to the council to consider all this and debate and make a decision. And then we'll turn it over to our distinguished president to lead the debate. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, residents, Dr. Feather. We have, Robyn, do you know if we have any input from the Parks and Natural Resources Committee on?
On this particular case?
On this particular case or, or in general?
In general, they, they of course were trying to put some more teeth into our tree chapter with the code that they wrote. Um, and so that's why we're here now. Basically, it's what we have is in code.
Right. Okay. I guess I'm, I'm a little concerned by the the vagueness or discretion in, in how many canopy trees we want on, on a lot. And, and maybe what we need to look to in the future is some sort of, uh, maybe it's not for some sort of a guideline, you know, lots of, less than nine thousand square feet should have two canopy trees. Above nine thousand, or should have three canopy trees and.
I didn't, no.
No.
Uh, I mean, it's, it's part of the reason why when large trees come down, it comes to the council is the large tree is a loss certainly to the property, but also to the town. The canopy trees, apart from being attractive in the town, and when they change color in the fall, they're very attractive in the town. Um, they also provide the shade. So a town with good canopy tends to be run about one or two degrees Celsius lower than a town without the canopy. And you can find that in streets here too. If you walk on a cherry blossom street in summertime, it's extremely hot. But if you walk on a street with canopy trees, you can feel it's cooler. So they, they do serve an important function for the town. Having said all that, I would support a motion which strongly encourages the residents to take advantage of the Montgomery County Program for Free Canopy Tree and take advantage of their help in bringing the tree along. Uh, to take advantage of Dr. Feather's offer of help also in making sure the tree is watered. But ultimately we leave the decision to the applicants.
Okay.
And we'd consider that. We'd be happy to.
Hold on, hold on. This is, you, now it's just the council debating.
Okay.
So thank you, Ben. What are your thoughts then?
Um, a couple of things. One is that in the future, I would really like, like you suggested, I'd like more guidance on how to, how to, how to figure this out. Otherwise it seems a little arbitrary, you know, they just lost two trees. Well, yeah, put them back, you know, I don't know. Um, I, I, I would like some better guidelines to this. But I also like Robin's suggestion is that we suggest that they take advantage of the Maryland, you know, tree program and and, and, and plant some more trees. On the other hand, I am really sensitive to the fact of what it costs them to take down their trees. Because I know I, I, I've been there too, where I've spent a fortune, you know, having to take down a dead tree, you know? Um, years gone by and recently. Um, and you know, I'm sensitive to that, that these, it costs us money every time something goes wrong when they're not town trees. So I would like to leave it up to them to do the right thing. And I'd like to encourage them to go to the, to Maryland to get, to get a free tree and free health. So.
Okay. Thank you, David. What are your thoughts, Shane?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think that, you know, I have a hard time saying like you have to put a tree down here because, um, you know, they just happen to have to remove it. And, you know, there's a lot of houses in the neighborhood, like their house looks like they have a lot of trees. There's a lot of houses in these neighborhoods that don't have a lot of trees to even begin with. So it's like, then how do you start deciding between like, oh, well, you have five trees, but you have three trees. And, you know, I mean, it just seems very um, challenging. So I mean, I would definitely recommend, um, you know, trying to use that Maryland, um,
It's Montgomery County.
Montgomery County tree, whatever. But, you know, I think that that should be up to their decision.
So it sounds like you're ready to, so it's ready to make a motion. So it sounds like we have consensus for a motion. Robin, can I ask you to?
Yeah, I, 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 I move that we strongly encourage the residents to use the Montgomery County Free Tree Program and their help in planting the tree and in nurturing the tree. And that's it.
Well, remember you have to address.
And to remove.
Process to removing the condition. So perhaps the town attorney can help you with the motion.
And to remove the prior condition that.
And to remove the prior condition. Thank you. Yes.
Okay. So Mr. Town Attorney, is that legally and technically sufficient?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there a second? How long? I saw Heller first. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And somebody will send us information on Montgomery County.
Yes, somebody will. And thank you for being so respectful of our process.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Bye bye.
Thanks.
The next item, public hearing, might should we consider approval of the following town tree removals as recommended by the town arborist. A red maple at forty-nine hundred Fallstone and a red maple at fifty-five oh five Graystone. Ms. Dr. Feather.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Um, so the forty-nine hundred Fallstone is a twenty-nine inch red maple. And, um, uh, I think three or four weeks ago it lost a large branch in one of the, uh, windstorms we had. And, uh, the trunk is in pretty bad shape. You can see from the pictures. So I think it's time to take that one down. Um, the other one's at fifty-five oh five Graystone. And the resident's concerned about this and so am I. Um, it's a very large tree. It's kind of getting too large for the median. And it has cracks in the trunk, uh, it's hazardous as well. And that, that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Council President, Sir, could you have any questions? No, no questions. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, councillor Bar.
But have you thought about how you're going to replace the trees yet?
Yeah. Thank you, Robin.
Yeah, um, we're, um, I, I actually, I'm going to start making a list, uh, this week for, uh, the, uh, to take a look at. Yeah. And, uh, I'll include these two sites on the list for this.
Thank you. Thanks.
Councillor Heller?
No questions.
Thank you, councillor Reback.
So we are going to replace the town trees that are getting taken down?
Yes, we'll, we'll do it this spring.
Okay. I have no question.
Okay. Thank you. Are there, Mr. Town Manager, are there any comments or questions from the resident or guests?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion? Sorry.
Move to approve Dr. Feather's recommendations to take down trees at forty-nine hundred Fallstone Avenue and fifty-five oh five Graystone Avenue because of hazardous conditions in the trees.
Is there a second? I see. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed. Our next item is the building administrator's report. Is this?
Uh, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
I say, good evening, sir.
Yeah.
Can you hear? Okay. Okay. Proceed, sir.
All right. At forty-seven nineteen Cumberland Avenue. Uh, they've applied for a, a permit to remove an existing deck of the rear of the house. And they've also applied for a, uh, uh, excuse me, uh, that permit was, we've contacted the applicant and we're waiting for information from them. At forty-five, forty-eight fifteen Cumberland Avenue. That house has been sold. We've met with the new owner. They plan on removing the house and constructing a new house. We've gone over the code with them. They haven't submitted anything to the county or to the town. At forty-nine hundred Cumberland Avenue, that permit, extended permit is scheduled to expire on May seventh. The homeowner has responded to, uh, an email saying that they plan on beginning work beginning of April. So I'm concerned they might not make the deadline and they might need an extension on that building permit. But we'll see when they get started. At forty-eight sixteen Essex. Uh, the staff has been talking to a contractor about making addition to that existing house for quite a while now. On December twentieth, I sent an email to the architect asking for an update on the project. And as of today, I have not received any comments from them. They have not submitted anything to the county yet. At forty-eight oh six Grantham, we recently, we, uh, requested a, a project update on that project. And they have not submitted plans to the county yet either. At fifty-five twenty-nine Surrey, the property's been sold. I've talked to the, uh, project owner, explained it to them that they need to file a permit with us. That we have new stormwater management regulations they need to be aware of. They have not submitted any plans to the county or the town. And the same thing goes for fifty-eight twenty-eight Trent Street. Uh, we met with them last week. They look, talked about removing that house and building a new house. And today I got two phone calls from, uh, homeowners who were looking to make additions to their house. We went over the zoning and the setbacks for forty-nine oh five Dorset and forty-nine oh six Fallstone. Next concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Council President, sir, could you have any questions? No questions. Thank you very much. Councillor Bar.
I'm trying not to get obsessed with forty-eight sixteen Essex Avenue.
Um, why not?
But that December twentieth email, and you haven't had a response to this February now, is really a bit unsatisfactory. Um, is there anything the town can do at this point to try to get action from them?
Um, maybe should the town, shouldn't the town manager answer that? Or maybe the town attorney, can he leave?
I think Ron's still here.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, I'm here.
I, I, I can't remember if there's any, are there any, um, violations, uh, dug at forty-eight sixteen Essex?
No, they've, the house has been vacant, but it's been kept up to date. Uh, apparently it has been sold recently. They keep the lawn cut. Uh, so I don't know what we can do. I mean, I guess it's up to you all and Ron, but as far as I know, they haven't submitted anything. So it's not pending. We've just had talks with the architect about some proposals, uh, for addition to the house. So, but they do keep it up.
So in order to satisfy our council member, what do you suggest, Mr. Town Attorney?
Uh,
to address his frustration?
Yeah, I mean, we, all I think we can do is reach out to the owner and and ask what their, their plans are. But I mean, if, if there are no code violations in existence, there's really no enforcement action to be taken.
Right. So. Are you saying, are you saying?
Well, they have vines growing up the, to the roof at several points in the house now. Um, and that is sometimes indication of damp in the house, but I can't confirm that.
Isn't there, isn't there some kind of county law, um, regarding?
There are county laws on housing standards, including grass can't be taller than twelve inches. I'm, I'll look right now. I don't think there's anything about, about vines, but let me, let me look.
But, but you know, one thing we could do is call the, uh, county, um, you know, the, um, the Department of.
Housing and Community Affairs.
Yeah. And I think that we, they can send, and we can ask the inspector to send it.
Yeah. Cause they, I mean, they'll, yeah, they'll look for evidence of infestations and, and other issues.
So, so, um, why don't we do that, Mr. Town Manager? And why don't we try to, um, um, inform councillor Bar the day that they come? Cause maybe he can provide information.
Super.
Is that, is that okay, councillor Bar?
Yes. Do we know how long it has been vacant now?
Well, I mean, I think how long is vacant is irrelevant to the, if there are violations because I, I've, in my property manager career, I've called many county inspectors in these kinds of situations. So.
All right.
So let's see what happens. Did you have any further questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Heller.
No.
Councillor Reback.
No.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. The next item is a, to consider introduction of a resolution prohibiting the purchase of single-use plastic. For example, plastic cutlery and water bottles by the town government as recommended by the town environment committee. Mr. Town Manager.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have a lot to add. I think we're all pretty well aware of what this is. Um, uh, the only thing I would maybe point you towards is the, the, the name of the, um, the resolution to make sure that that is uh, aligns with what the council's intent was. Um, but otherwise we amended the language after the discussion at the last work session. Um, but otherwise, we amended the language after the discussion at the last work session um, to, uh, remove the prohibition of committees to, uh, from uh, using plastic cutlery and the swim team included in that, and instead move, uh, to the second element of the resolution, uh, urging all residents and volunteer committees to embrace and commit to reduction, reuse and recycling um, of, of plastic. Um, but otherwise, as I said, I think we've pretty well, uh, established what this is. So, um, I don't know if the town attorney has anything to add.
Oh, yes.
We also removed the policy to engage in composting of food scraps and soil paper at town events. So this resolution is just limited to the prohibition on the use of plastics. And we agreed to address composting later.
Okay, thank you. Counsel President Serko, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you for making the edits.
Counsel Member Barr?
Well, a comment again rather than a question, which, I mean, this prohibits single-use plastics, but it's like you're taking away something and then suddenly you can't have water bottles at July fourth event. Yes, you can, is the answer. You can have cardboard water containers. You can have aluminum cans with water in them. They are widely available. In fact, in fact, there's a whole set of different kinds of water in aluminum cans now that, um, can be purchased easily.
But this, no, this, this does not prohibit a resident from bringing.
And it does not.
This is just, this is just prohibiting the town government from purchasing.
Right.
These, I mean, it's, it's so mild, it's just a start.
Right.
So there's no ban on, there's, you know, uh,
All, all.
It's, it's just, I mean, actually, um, a council member could go buy, I mean, it's not in the spirit of it, but a council member could go buy some single-use plastic and bring and give it to everyone.
Sadly, that's true, but I'm sure.
To any thirsty, to any thirsty, um, um, county council member.
But I'm sure no council member in this room would dream.
But, but this is just, you know, as I, as I said, I think we should ban all of this stuff and fine people. But we just have to start somewhere. And this is such, this is such a baby staff. But it doesn't even require, it doesn't even require a law really, because the, the, the environmentally minded town staff doesn't want to buy this crap anyway. Okay, so council member, Councilor Heller, do you have any questions?
Okay, no, I, I, I don't have any questions. I just think that it's, um, we should set an example and do this.
Very, yeah, okay. Chairman, any questions about?
Do you have any question when it's seen proposed?
No, I mean, I, I agree with Lucy Freeman in terms of, you know, making sure that we have an adequate supply of water. Because like, no one wants to be handed like a little paper cup from like, uh, you know, office water thing. So as long as we can, I, I.
Anyway, you're only debating the introduction of, right now.
I think that as long as we can have lots of water on the Fourth of July for the firefighter, I mean, you know, and we can buy the cans of water and buy, um, you know, the cardboard cartons of water. I just want to make sure that we have water.
Okay, so I'm going to now turn it over to you, Shane, to discuss whether you want to introduce this.
So, actually, I think we've already, we've had lots of discussion, we had some work done this evening. Um, and this is just to introduce it. So there'll be debate, there'll be more town engagement hopefully, um, next month. So at this point, unless anybody has any further questions or concerns about us introducing them. I'm saying right to her.
Are you, are you creating the message?
Well, I just want to see, does anybody want to add anything at this point before I introduce it, try to introduce it? Okay, let me see if I can do this.
Introduce the way.
Please. Okay, um, I move that we introduce the resolution adopting policy for ending the purchasing of used plastic by the town government.
Okay, sir, second.
Second.
Is there discussion? The only thing I would want to say is, uh, someone needs to write a article it, after the introduction. And I will be planning to, I might write something myself.
As, as, as the liaison to the environment committee, I believe it falls on my shoulders. I will do it.
Okay, excellent. Okay.
Thank you, Rob.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much, everybody. Okay, uh, the last item tonight is the discussion of the manager's report. So first, I'm going to ask the manager if he has anything to add to that extremely well-written and comprehensive report before we take questions.
Yeah, um, the, uh, one thing I did want to point out budget-wise is that we got, uh, January is one of our months when we get one of our big income tax, uh, returns from the state. And ours was, uh, considerably larger than what we were budgeting. And, um, we plugged in some numbers and we're expecting about a half a million dollars above, um, our total budget for this year. So.
I remember what I said, though.
You said, okay, hold on, hold on a second. Let me, let me finish this report, then you can ask later. Um.
The, the only other thing I'll add to the report is just noting that, um, you know, we'll keep, keep in mind the estimated costs for these, uh, for the various projects. And also, as a heads up, you know, there's going to be several big uh, contract items to discuss at the February work session. Um, and, um, uh, several other meetings that, uh, Mayor Slaven and I are working on over the next month or so that, um, we should expect in our calendars.
Okay, thank you. Counsel President Serko, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you. It's nice to see the updates on proposals.
Counselor Barr, do you have any questions or comments?
I certainly have a comment. Here we go. I, I did talk to, about this, Matt. The two thousand eighteen tax law changed the status of what are called pass-through organizations. A lot of law firms are pass-through organizations. We have a lot of lawyers in town. What pass-through organizations can do now and do do now is file their own income tax forms, which claims deductions for state taxes and deductions for municipal taxes and all the other claims that they can put in previously. Because they were passed through, it was only the individuals that did that. Our state, the, the, the treasury took years to actually write the rules on this. And so last year was the first year it was implemented. Our state said, we cannot possibly tax the individuals. We cannot calculate, look at the individual's tax returns from law firms until we have processed the law firm's tax form. With the result that a whole bunch of tax forms were completely late by the state. Which means that they didn't come in last year. Instead, they came in in January. So that's why our January dollars are way up. But this won't repeat in June. And that's, that, that point to remember.
Okay. Okay, Jenny, do you have any questions?
No more questions.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Heller. Do you have any questions there? Counselor, right back.
No.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yeah.
At seven fifty-nine, yay!
Set the record. And I'm trying to help, Councilor. The president's circle, get home in time for dinner. Okay, thank you. And I want to congratulate you on the way you all handled that hearing. It was perfect.
Okay.
And, and the applicants were very amenable to, to, to our process. And it, and it, and I think the end result was the correct one. And hopefully, we will encourage them. Hopefully, they will. Thank you, Mr. Town Attorney, if you're still there. Um, and hopefully, they will take advantage of it. And then we also should, um, um, continue to publicize that program.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna align too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.